All right, we'll bring the meeting to order, January 2nd, 2024. Before we get started, we have Councilmember Evans is participating virtually and I'd like to welcome our newest Councilmember, Councilmember Edwards. Can we call, can we call a roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Present.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Present.
Mayor Millman?
Here.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
Present.
Councilmember Arnt?
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Everybody present, stand for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve the agenda and order and content.
Second.
A motion, a second, in discussion, seen none, roll call vote, I think we're required to do that with virtual participation, is that correct? Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember, uh, Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Aye, yes.
And Mayor Millman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnt?
Yes.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Approved. First up, we have a special presentation, election of mayor and deputy mayor, Madam Clerk.
Good evening. I'll begin with the nominations for the position of mayor. Councilmembers need not be recognized by the presiding officer to make a nomination, and no second is required. The voice vote will be taken for the office of mayor first, with the results being announced before we proceed to the deputy mayor election. Are there any questions from council before I call for nominations? Nominations are now in order for the office of the mayor, are there any nominations?
I nominate Mike Millman.
Are there any other nominations? Last and final time, are there any further nominations? Seeing or hearing none, nominations are now closed. It is an open election to conduct by roll call vote, when called upon, please state the name of the nominee for which you are casting your vote.
Is now joining.
Councilmember Evans?
Mike Millman.
Councilmember Edwards?
Mike Millman.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
Abstain.
Councilmem, Councilmember Millman?
Mike Millman.
Councilmember Arnt?
Mike Millman.
Councilmember Taylor?
Abstain.
And Councilmember Randolph?
Mike Millman.
And that is five votes for Mike Millman.
Thank you, and thank you for the vote of confidence, I appreciate it. Next up, we have the election of deputy mayor, the same rules apply, so we'll open it up for nominations for deputy mayor.
I nominate James Randolph.
Any other nominations? Seen none, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Evans?
James Randolph.
Councilmember Edwards?
James Randolph.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
Abstain.
Councilmember Millman?
James Randolph.
Councilmember Arnt?
James Randolph.
Councilmember Taylor?
Abstain.
And Councilmember Randolph?
James Randolph.
Deputy Mayor Randolph, five to two, thank you. Next up, we have public comments, did anybody sign up?
Yes, and I believe you do have a sheet from our virtual submission, and I will grab the sign in sheet, one moment.
Okay, when I call your name, you'll have three minutes, state whether you live in the city limits, and I will start, while we're getting the other list, we'll start with Spencer Clark. Sarah Spencer Clark, seen none, Shenquan Liang.
Thank you, my name is Shenquan Liang, and I am a resident of Woodinville. So ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the city council, and fellow citizens of Woodinville, today I, I want to speak with you to so heartily support Sharon Peterson for the position 200 of the Planning Commission. There is a critical role to future growth and well-being of our beloved city. So, for many years, Sharon has been a really unwavering contributor to our community, and dedication is not just apparent, is a living testament of her deep rooted commitment to Woodinville, and what truly sets her apart is unparalleled dedication as a community activist. He isn't just another resident, he's a proactive leader, who has consistently stood up for the collective interest, from the west transfer station to Woodinville, Wood Hills Park. Her efforts not only are being recommended, commendable, but also pivotal to bringing our crucial community concerns to the forefront. Moreover, Sharon's commitment to our city is evident in her numerous appearances at city council meetings and other commissioner meetings, and she's not only, she's not the one who shy away from any tough conversations, instead, she confronts challenges head on and articulating the concerns of our community with clarity and a passion. Her presentations always rather researched, insightful, and resonated with the pulse of the residents of Woodinville. Appointing Sharon Peterson as the Planning Commissioner is not only a choice, but also a step towards ensuring a brighter future for our city. With her on the commission, the commission is bound to see heightened levels of engagement, insight, and as well as effectiveness. So, in Sharon, we saw a leader who understands the delicate balance between the development preserving the unique characters of Woodinville, her vision aligns with the aspirations of our citizens, and cities that grows yet turns its unique charm. So in conclusion, I urge you consider Sharon Peterson for the Planning Commission. Her appointment will not just raise the bar, and also set a new standard for community focused governance. It's a bigger decision that today, that we and the future generations will look back upon today with pride. Thank you for your time and consideration, thank you.
Thank you. Next, come to the podium, state your name and whether you live in city limits, Carrie Scarborough.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Carrie Scarborough, I'm a long-term resident of Woodinville, and a longtime friend of Sharon Peterson. Not only is she my best friend, but she has, she and I have worked together extensively with regard to the community. I know her to be diligent, technically skilled, far more than I am with the computer, and very aggressive in making sure she knows everything that needs to be known before she makes a decision. She's deliberate, she's articulate, and she shows up on time for every meeting, she's always prepared, and looks hard into anything that might be of concern that needs to be examined before she makes a decision. I'm urging you to vote for Sharon Peterson for the Planning Commission, thank you.
Thank you. Steve Yabrough.
Good evening, Councilmembers, and Happy New Year. I'm Steve Yabrough, I am a citizen and live in the city of Woodinville. So I had three things I wanted to chat with you about tonight. The first is, we have a candidate for Planning Commission who I think we ought to be appointing. That individual is smart, thoughtful, analytical, concise and precise in her communication, a long-term citizen, homeowner who loves Woodinville, something we need all the time, and willing to do the work and ferret out issues below the surface, and that's something you all rely on us to do for you. As a longest-serving Planning Commissioner, I've had a chance to see an awful lot that's going on in the city over the last decade plus. So, this individual is precisely the kind of individual I think we need on Planning Commission. Sharon Peterson is that individual, I've known her for about 15 years also, and she is, again, very focused, concerned, thoughtful, caring, she's all the things we want in looking at issues that come before Planning Commission, and one of the things I've strived to do, and I think you all want to see happen also, is that we want to preserve the elements that make Woodinville special. She has the background, I think, to bring to bear on that. The second item I'd like to talk about has to do with council rules, and I noticed in there is a possibility of limiting public comment, and I would encourage you to be open-minded about that, listen to the people who voted you into office, be willing to listen to their issues and concerns lest you be isolated. The third thing is something which we all are facing and probably sad about, and that's Mulbacs, it's a loss to us, it's been a cultural and economic icon for Woodinville. When you ask someone, you know, about their, where they live, and they ask where you live, and you say, "I live in Woodinville," and they will say, "Oh, where's that? Well, it's, you know, Mulbacs?" Ah, yes, Mulbacs, know that. So, I think we're all kind of grieving about the loss of Mulbacs, and I know the loss is deeply felt by many of us throughout the Pacific Northwest, not just Woodinville. I hope you'll be able to do something to help support them and keep it going, although it looks rather bleak at this point. Thank you very much, again, Happy New Year, and I look forward to working with you all in the next year.
Thank you. Gary Harris.
Good evening, my name is Gary Harris, I live within the city of Woodinville. I want to support one of the candidates that is running for the Planning Commission, and that person is Sharon Peterson. I've lived in Woodinville for about 12, going on 13 years or so, I haven't known Sharon all that time, but she is one of the people that I know better than most folks here in Woodinville. And I'd like to say that I know that she has been here for at least 20 years, I don't know how long she's lived here, but something going on 20 years or more, and that one of the first things that I learned about the city of Woodinville before I was a council member or involved in other things in Woodinville, was that way back when, going back 20 years or so, that there was a law that was going to be enacted that would have changed the zoning, that would have applied to Woodinville, so that in possibility, R1 zoning might have disappeared. Sharon Peterson was very vocal and involved in, in keeping that law from going into effect, that case went to the Washington State Supreme Court, which ruled in Woodinville's favor, and you can have Sharon Peterson to thank for some of that effort. So, I don't know the other three individuals running for this position, but you would be very hard pressed to find someone that has the longevity, the intelligence, the evidence-based medicine, a term I use a lot, the evidence-based approach. She is honest, straightforward, and she tells it like it is, and we need to hear that. So I would very much support her nomination, well, her nomination, but her appointment to the Planning Commission, I think you'd be hard pressed to find another individual that would be as capable and would serve the city of Woodinville as well as she could. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent calendar.
I move to accept the consent calendar as written.
Second.
A motion, a second, in discussion, roll call vote?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Millman?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnt?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yes.
Motion carries. First business item is interviews and appointment to position number 200 on Planning Commissioner, Mr. Buchanan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have a presentation for you, Seating, I believe most council members have been through this process before, of course, it is entirely up to council what this process looks like, but typically, as many of you are aware, we've gone through an interview process where we've interviewed the app against this evening, I believe we have four with us, we've kind of provided some sample questions, as suggestions, food for thought, more than anything, of course, you can answer or ask any question that you'd like with them, within legal bounds, but that would be the recommended process, is call them up one at a time, ask, and then you can nominate and make a selection afterwards.
Thank you. Do we, do we separate the candidates while one's going, is that been typical, what I experienced in the past?
We've done it different ways over the past, I think with the virtual, my opinion, virtually, it kind of negates the need to do a lot of that, they can go watch in the lobby if they wanted to, but it's entirely to council.
Okay, okay. Any objections or thoughts on that, just, we're okay? All right.
Is there audio in the lobby? Is there audio, is there audio in the lobby?
There is our audio, I believe it's off right now, but certainly they can access it remotely, just like anybody else could.
I, I think there's value in separating the candidates, just because the first candidate gets no time to prepare, I don't think the further candidates should.
Entirely to council's discretion, yep.
I, actually, I think that's a good idea, do we need a motion for that, or just, that's just our procedure? Okay, well, let's, let's go ahead and do that. Do we have an order of who, which ones were going? Sorry for the hassle, but we want to make it as fair for everybody as possible.
So, we can just go down the order that we have them in your packet on first page of the staff report, if that works for councilors, and then we'd have the other three just wait in the lobby if, if that works for everybody.
Okay. Who's first up?
It looks like Kashif Amin.
Okay, if we could escort everybody else out except for the first candidate? And just as a reminder to council, everybody will get one question to ask the candidates, that will be the same question that all of the candidates get. Hello? If you want to introduce yourself?
Hey, my name is Kashif, I've been living in Woodinville since 2020, I'm the resident of Woodinville City. I think we met once in my home, actually.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I'm the president of the local HOA of our community, and I've been working as an HOA president for about four years since I moved here. So, yeah, I think, otherwise, my full-time job is I work in an IT company as an engineering manager, so that's my full-time job.
Okay. I guess we'll just go right down the line, Councilmember Evans, you get the first question.
Great, thank you, and thank you for raising your hand, Mr. Chairman, and I'm sorry for my voice. Okay, here's the question. To effectively plan for Woodinville's current and future requirements, we need commissioners who can evaluate the facts presented, weigh the benefits and trade-offs to the taxpayers of Woodinville, and who understand that growth must happen per the Growth Management Act, or GMA. Our planning commissioners must not allow rumors, political agendas, organized social pressure, and disinformation to cloud their judgment. How will you ensure that you understand and fairly apply all applicable laws, codes, and approved growth plans, such as the Transportation Master Plan and the Housing Action Plan, when voting on Planning Commission recommendations?
So, I have been working as an engineering manager in an IT company, and I've also been part of the IT committee for the Notchur School District for one year, where we had to basically go through the similar kind of things, that, you know, what are the recommendations we should do for the Notchur students during the COVID and after COVID, for, you know, selecting what is the right approach to provide devices, not to provide devices, how to basically manage that, and all those kind of things, right? So we did go through all the, like, you know, collected all the information, how, how much time students have to spend in the class, what are the devices which can be useful for them, as it like, you know, every student can have a different device or same device, what are the pros and cons for each of those, right? And how much can the taxpayers basically fund whichever, basically, you know, device or the, 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 the approach we take, right? So I, I've gone through some of that, actually, in that, in that committee, and it was a good insight, basically, how to basically collect all the facts, make decisions based on that, right, and how to basically apply that in the, like, you know, classroom setting as well. Also in the, like, you know, HOA, I'm the president of the HOA, we, we go through all the same kind of things as well, that, you know, I had to work with the city council as well, like, you know, should we basically work with city council to make sure that, you know, the, the common areas, how do we manage that, there was a dispute about the lighting, the streetlights, that we had to basically resolve with the city council as well, where we had to basically get all the facts, like, you know, when it was basically decided by the developer who should pay for that, and what are the things, like, you know, so anyways, I, I've been, like, you know, working with the HOA as a president for most of those things, I've worked in the Notchur School District Technology Committee as well, and, you know, in, in my day job as well, like, you know, that's part of my job to basically work with my team, to present the best decision which is possible based on the facts, based on the, like, you know, available resources and all that we have to do.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you. What do you believe is an important planning issue facing the city at this time, and what are a few ideas you have for addressing these, this issue?
So, my ideas might not be popular, but I think, for say, for the, Woodinville City is more of an urban place, right, like, you know, where, sorry, the rural place where there are, like, you know, homes with a lot of space, and, you know, I think there is a need for, in the city's center areas, for more multifamily, you know, housing, so that, you know, we can basically make sure that there is the pricing, the home prices that are going up, because, like, you know, there is less homes to build, because there is, like, you know, every home needs more space. If we can basically have multifamily housing in the center, that can help reduce some of the, like, you know, the, the home prices that are going up uncontrollably as well. So, if there are things that we can do around that, that'll be useful.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Welcome this evening, thank you for coming. Woodinville is a growing community with many complex perspectives that we have to align and keep separate as a planning community. We have a rural community, an agricultural community in the far back, and an urban community that we're trying to grow. Given that many new perspectives are coming into Woodinville, what new, unique, or missing perspectives would you bring to the Planning Commission?
So, I think, I can say even in this whole room, I'm the only one with, you know, like, from a certain background, I guess, right? So I can definitely bring that perspective from, like, you know, somebody who have worked in IT industry, I'm, I'm basically, you know, from a group of, like, background that can provide a different perspective as well, right, like, you know, and I moved here, as I'm the HOA president as well, I've worked with a lot of people, a lot of people who has basically, I've been representing them as well, right, like, you know, I hear a lot of things from them as well, about, like, you know, what are the things that we can do better, although those are related mostly, like, you know, how to work with the city government to resolve some of the conflicts that the homeowners have, but, like, you know, I do have that perspective from them as well, that, you know, what are the things that they need to get resolved as well, right? So, I think some of those things can be useful. I will admit, I haven't worked in the, like, you know, I haven't been as closely involved in the city projects and planning and all those things, but I've been more involved with, like, you know, working with the city council and city government for the HOA-related stuff that I've been basically, you know, working with. So I might not know 100% about what the Planning Commissioner does, but I do have, like, you know, some point of views from the, as an outsider, I guess, right? And, you know, can bring in some different perspective from that side.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bess Campbell?
I know, this is really nerve-wracking, it's okay, there's not wrong answers or right answers, so you're okay.
Absolutely.
In the past few years, we've seen the loss of some retail and commercial jobs and space as parts of our city have redeveloped. With the prospect of more development on the horizon, how do you propose the city manage growth to maintain and grow our commercial and industrial businesses?
So, I think, again, coming from an IT side, right, like, you know, online retailers are getting pretty, like, you know, important, which is impacting the, in, like, brick-and-mortar stores, actually, right? That is one of the things, but I think there are, like, you know, some things about security that has to be taken care of, of course, right, like, you know, to make sure that, you know, stores feel secure, and they don't basically have any problems with, like, you know, break-ins and all that, right, like shoplifting and all. The other thing is, I think, post-COVID, there hasn't been enough push to bring back the consumers back to the stores, right, like, you know, and provide enough resources to them, and make sure that, you know, they can basically push for, like, even for the hotels, sorry, the restaurants, and, you know, small mom-and-pop shops, they are, they, they did struggle during COVID, right, and they had to shut down, and they had to basically be supported with enough resources to make sure they can bring back the consumers, maybe, you know, some incentives about, I don't know, tax reduction, or maybe some other, if there are possibilities to make sure that, you know, they can bring up, bring back some of those things, right? It, it might be a little bit different topic, but I do remember one, once I was in hospital for some general checkup, and the nurse, we were talking about especially the, the, the problems that they were facing during COVID for online learnings, actually, right? Because not, not everybody, again, I'm bringing example from my Notchur experience, but they were struggling to basically work their jobs and provide support to students for online learning as well, right? With an understanding, with also a problem that they didn't knew, they were not savvy enough for technology and how to basically set up the computers for the kids, to get them basically online learning and all those kind of things, right? So, people who have to basically work in these kind of, like, you know, different situations, they have to be supportive, supported, actually, to make sure that they can go to a store, do their day job as well, right, and, and, you know, provide them some incentives, at least, right, from the city government or, you know, other places.
Thank you. Councilmember Arnt?
Thank you. Given the city's need to plan for affordable housing at all levels, what actions do you think the city, city should be undertaking to meet those goals?
So, I think I, I mentioned one of the things where multifamily housing is definitely one of the options that cities should definitely consider and expand a little bit more, and I know there are some programs where there are, like, you know, income groups where only certain people can basically buy a certain type of property, which is basically just, you know, forced in that income group, right? Those kind of programs can be improved a little bit more as well, to make sure that, you know, we, we can have enough housing available for people who, who need it, right? I do know from, again, Notchur experience, right, like, you know, there are pretty high, like, the amount of taxes, the property taxes that get collected from Woodinville area, overall Notchur, but Woodinville is part of that as well, right, are pretty high, right? There are a lot of people who have, like, you know, big expensive homes, including myself, sorry, as well, right? But, like, if we can make sure that, you know, the, the properties, the multifamily homes, and the, the homes that are specific to the income groups are provided for those income group, you know, people, that'll be very useful in this case. group, uh, you know, people, uh, that'll be very useful in this case, I think.
Councilmember Taylor.
Okay. Are you familiar with the city motto, country living, city style?
I, I'm sorry, I have not.
Okay. And the second part of that is, what does this mean to you as a planning commissioner?
So, as I said, that, you know, I, I didn't know about that. Uh, I, I think we do have a clear, like, you know, there, Woodville, I think, is pretty big, right? Like, you know, there are a lot of areas where there are like, you know, agricultural land and even, you know, farmland or farmhouse style, like, you know, houses, which are pretty big in terms of like, you know, land, but like, you know, one home on it, right? I'm not saying that, you know, we should basically change those areas, but what I'm saying is that, you know, the center part of the Woodville City where there is an opportunity to basically increase multifamily housing, that should be considered and that should be basically discussed in the planning commission as well. And if there are projects that can help in those areas, we should definitely take a look at that. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear about that motto before, read, read about that. I will definitely go back and look into that for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you. And last question, uh, tell us why, I think you've covered some of this, but tell, my question is, tell us why you want to be on planning and how would you approach balancing, uh, the growth and preserving the Woodville character?
So, uh, honestly speaking, I, why I applied for this job was basically, I've been working as a HOA president, right? And I've been working with people, I've been listening to a few things. So, uh, you know, it was just like a, kind of like, uh, you know, can I bring that perspective or a different perspective to the planning commission as well? There, there was a opening, so I thought like, you know, I'll just apply and, and see, you know, where it goes, I guess, right? And, uh, that's one of the things. The second thing is that, you know, honestly speaking, the housing market, the way it's been recently going out of hand in terms of like, you know, pricing and all, I think there has to be some considerations about like, you know, how do we basically make sure that people who want a home can have a home? And if cities can help in those, you know, those parts as well, right? Like, you know, either by providing, uh, you know, housing for, for the income group, uh, I, I, I'm forgetting the name exactly, what, what it is called, but like, you know, either that or multifamily homes with like, you know, low cost homes that are available for everyone who wants to get it, right? Again, my opinions might be a little unpopular about that, but like, you know, uh, generally what happens is that people like us, I have a big home, uh, as well, don't generally agree with the multifamily homes if it is in their backyard. Rather, somebody else's backyard is fine, yeah, build something in somebody else's backyard. My backyard don't even come near me, right? I think that's the, that's the mindset that we need to change and we need to have, like, you know, all of us need to be more open to, uh, opportunities where there are multifamily homes, possibilities, and the city should support those. Uh, yeah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you, uh, spending your time and, and willing to step up and volunteer. You can stay for, uh, the next ones if you'd like.
That's okay. I'll, I'll go. I'll probably just, you know.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you everyone for your time.
Thank you. Hi, welcome. We're going to take turns, everybody gets to ask one question. It's the same question of all candidates. And, uh, if you can state your name and then we'll get started with the questions.
Sharon Peterson.
Thank you. Uh, first question, uh, Councilmember Evans.
Great, thank you. To effectively plan for Woodville's current and future requirements, we need commissioners who can evaluate the facts presented, weigh the benefits and trade-offs to taxpayers of Woodville, and who understand that growth must happen per the Growth Management Act or GMA. Our planning commissioners must not allow rumors, political agendas, organized social pressure, and disinformation to cloud their judgment. How will you ensure that you understand and fairly apply all applicable laws, codes, and approve growth plans such as the Transportation Master Plan and the Housing Action Plan when voting on planning commission recommendations?
That's a mouthful. Um, I think that what you said should be true of all members who serve the community, whether you're a planning commissioner, you sit on the Open Spaces Board, or you're a city council person. I also think that being informed is the first thing, so I made my own, uh, comp plan notebook, and I've dog-eared it and digested it and put little stickies on it and noted where it needs to be revised, even the revision that is due in February, hopefully this year. So I think reading and being informed is first and foremost. I think making sure that you hear and are open to a variety of input and opinions, whether it's from meetings here, by being out in the public, by meeting people in the grocery store, wherever one happens to go and socialize, meeting people in the park, getting input, vigorous input from the community, where we have hundreds of responses to surveys, not just tens of responses. And I also think that as a businessperson with 40 years of experience, I did eight startups in a row over a tw- 20-year period. So I know about what it means to run a business. I worked for Microsoft for nine years, I've now been a vendor for them for 11 years. So I've got a deep business background, I'm used to thinking about profit and loss, and I think a city should be run as a business. If a city can't make a profit, if it can't point to its accomplishments, then it needs to stare at its belly button and revise its plans. So everywhere that there's a goal or there's an objective in this book that was written back in 2015, I think we ought to go back and take a report card of how are we doing? Where have we met the mark and where have we not met the mark? And where we haven't met the mark, we need to make some changes. Or kill the item and say, we haven't met the mark, it's no longer important, the world changed, and that's okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you. Um, what in your view is an important planning issue facing the city at this time? And what are some ideas you have for addressing this issue?
Well, the biggest, important, horrible thing staring us in the face is the loss of Mulback's. And, uh, we were giggling out there in the lobby about, you know, when Mulback's gets boarded up and then there's this large, empty plot, imagine the amount of feedback that we're going to get from this once stunning landmark that was known to the committee, where citizens or visitors or whoever are going to look at that boarded up building and say, well, how come it's gone? What happened? What hap- who failed? So I, I think that it is a tragedy, I think that it is a huge loss for the reputation of Woodville, for the 60-year tenure that Mulback's has had in this city as an anchor tenant or an anchor, and almost to help define the culture of Woodville. And it's really sad that this happened. So I think it's really important for us to understand how it happened and how it got to this point. And it doesn't matter if the city council does or does not have control over it, what matters is understanding it so we can not repeat it again. Having said that, in the midst of this tragedy, there could be an opportunity. Think about New York City, think about the gentleman who donated the park in the middle of New York City hundreds of years ago. Think about the vision that he had to donate this huge spot of land that was nowhere near any of what New York City had at that time, but there was a vision there. Think about the guy who donated Green Lake back when Green Lake was, I don't know, a half a day's ride by horseback from what was at that point, the downtown Seattle area. What if we took the opportunity to keep the name, the Garden District, but thought all new about what that could look like? And said, yeah, we acknowledge that there's a huge loss here with Mulback's, but now we're going to keep the vision, we're going to keep the, one of the 11 principles in the beginning of the comprehensive plan is about keeping a garden district. And literally back in 2015, those were the words that were in the comp plan. So let's not lose that, let's be creative, let's be open-minded, let's really think outside the box.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Woodville is a growing community with many perspectives that require balancing the needs of rural, a nearby agricultural, and a growing urban area that we need to respond to as a planning community. What new, unique, or missing perspective would you bring to the planning commission?
Well, I moved here 19 years ago. I got involved with a community group within a month after I moved in, and I've been involved with that community group for the last 18 years. I was involved when the developer who wanted to develop Wood Trails in Montevello first brought their development plan to the city and when we then went to the hearing examiner and then we went three rounds of court papers all the way up to Supreme Court. I was involved in helping to assemble, organize, proofread, and turn in 1,200 pages of documentation to support Woodville's stance and the stance of the community group at that point, that the city had the right to make its own decisions about where upzoning should be. So the reason I said all of that is because I have a background in understanding how things work, and I think having a background and working for a Fortune 500 doesn't hurt when you think about processes and procedures and who needs to get on board in order to get big things accomplished. I also took the time to, as I said, read the comprehensive plan and I've looked at what were the things that we wanted to do eight years ago? Where have we made progress and frankly, where have we not made any progress? So I think keeping ourselves honest and going back and saying, this is what we said we wanted to do, now let's do the report card and gives ourselves a grade on what have we actually gotten done and what have we not gotten done? I think that's important. And I also think that the comprehensive plan does a really good job of dividing or maybe categorizing areas of the city. It categorizes the various needs, all of which need to be balanced and counterbalanced against each other. So, yeah, a commissioner or a person serving the city can't go in blindly, they can't go in with a, any sort of a predetermined notion. You have to balance the needs against the available monies and against the priorities and against the economy and against everything else going on.
Thank you. Councilmember Wes Campbell.
In the past few years, uh, we've seen the loss of retail and commercial jobs and space as sites in our city have redeveloped. With the prospect of more development on the horizon, how do you propose the city manage growth to maintain and grow our commercial and industrial businesses?
You know, one thing that was, one thing that we, I think we really need to think about is what did COVID do to the city of Woodville? And yes, what did COVID do to the whole world, but specifically for our future, what did COVID do to the city of Woodville? Because things that are in this book that were thought about or measured or done back in 2010, 2013, really may not be true anymore in the post-COVID era. In a post-COVID era, all three of us who were talking in the lobby, we all work remote. We don't need to commute. My commute's 20 feet unless I want to go to the kitchen. So the need, the needs that I have today are different than the needs I had five years ago. And I think the needs that the community has are changing. For example, the, the demographics that were cited in this report eight years ago said that the percentage of elderly was up 3% for the last eight years, I believe. So the population at that point anyway was slightly headed toward the older, more mature mix of residents, and the number of humans per household was down a tiny bit, it was down to like, I think, 2.38 from 2.8 something. So when we think about small business, I think there's two things. We have to make it easier for them to do business with Woodville. A small business only has so many hats they can wear. And if you're, um, the guy who owned the gluten-free store, it was him and his mom. That was the only two employees and maybe a stock guy. Well, he's got to be the dishwasher and the janitor and the purchasing pro and the manager and the payroll guy and the tax guy and everything. And for a lot of our little teeny businesses who are occupying small little spaces in the city, we have to make it easier for them to really be able to do business with us. We need to re-energize the Chamber of Commerce and help make sure it represents those small businesses and does so well and isn't leaning so hard toward just the wineries and spirits business that it leaves out the other little guys. And again, having been a victim or a survivor of eight startups in a row, I understand about what it means to live and what it means to die as a business.
Thank you. Councilmember Art.
Thank you. Given the city's need to plan for affordable housing at all levels, what actions do you think the city should be undertaking to meet those goals?
I think the city really needs to understand the demographics and we need to come to grips with the definition of the word affordable. When, when a few weeks ago, we were having the discourse about average salaries and how much rent was here versus elsewhere and what the average salaries is, are, when you look at the demographics of average salaries, you realize that the people who live in Woodville who work are some of the well, best paid, highest earnings people in the entirety of King County, much less Washington State. So is it really rational for us to say that we should create housing so that somebody who makes $18 an hour at a retail store serving ice cream can afford to live here? It may not be the right value proposition. It may not even be a value proposition that a developer wants to have a conversation about. So I, I think we have to be rational. Now, having said that, that doesn't mean we can't tell developers, look, I want you to go work with Arch and I want you to go work with other, uh, groups who are set up to work with people in lower income and help those people get a head start, help plug them into the resources that they really need to thrive instead of just survive. But I, I've never really heard a real, true definition, other than the state's stats, of what we really think is affordable. And back when our community group was fighting with the developer for nine years and 1,200 pages and $400,000, they were talking about affordable housing and their definition at that point was $900,000. I don't think that's affordable. I don't think that even fits anybody's definition of affordable. That's not a first time home buyer price point. So that would be my starting point, is let's agree on what's affordable and let's agree on who we're serving and why.
Councilmember Taylor.
Okay. Are you familiar with the city motto, country living, city style? What does this mean to you as a planning commissioner?
So when we were outside talking as a group, a long time ago in a galaxy far away, when I was very young, I had a friend who had a horse in Woodville and I rode my 10-speed bicycle from North Seattle to Woodville so I could ride her horse. And back then, the Dairy Queen had a hitching post in front of it. That's country living, city style. You could literally back then ride your horse to Dairy Queen and get off and go have ice cream and I don't know what your horse did because they shouldn't have ice cream. Um, but that and things like Lake Leota and things like, uh, Wilmont Park, not just the park, but the fact that it's connected all the way down to Redmond and all the way up and around to Bothell, things like, um, that neighborhood back there, not that new development that goes all the way out to the curb, but the neighborhood back there where it's walkable and where the sidewalks are like eight feet and you can actually amble without being fear of, you know, being hit by a car, that's country living, city style. I, I don't want Redmond for this city, where you walk down a street in Redmond and you're like on this street that's 20 feet wide and it goes up 10 stories on either side of you. That, that's like a canyon, that's horrible. That, that's not the vision and that's not what this comp plan says either. The whole idea of architecture incorporating wood and things like a lodge feel, that's country living, city style. And being able to go from watching a soccer game to having a really nice dinner two blocks that way, that's country living, city style. And having a walkable downtown, but, you know, if you take a half an hour bike ride or whatever, you can go to Wood Trails and hike the trail, that's country living, city
Thank you. Thank you. One of the hazards of going last is that a lot of this is repetition, so just, if it is, just ignore that. So, tell us why you want to be on Planning, and how do you approach balancing the growth and preserving the character of Woodenville?
Why want to be on Planning Commission? Because it's a good step to helping to continue to put into practice the vision of this city and to keeping that motto, "Country living, city style." I don't want it to be just words. There's a reason that a hot air balloon is on the Woodenville logo, and that reason is our tree canopy. If we didn't have the tree canopy we have, we couldn't have hot air balloons, because they need stable air above them. So, anything that threatens our tree canopy, even the tree replacement strategy threatens our hot air balloons, and it threatens a vital part of our business. The loss of Mulback's threatens the very livelihood of the city. If the average sale price at Mulback's is, I don't know what, $75, their average retail transaction, multiply that by three, or four, or five, because people who are on Nextdoor.com making comments have said, "I used to come from XYZ down the road, 15, 20 miles, I'd come to Mulback's, then I'd go shopping at Haggen, then I'd go out to eat, maybe I'd get an ice cream, or maybe I'd go to a movie, and then I would go home." They made a day of it. But if there's no Mulback's, they're not coming. So, the loss to the city from an income point of view is monumental. It's not just the loss of the retail value and the tax value and the tax income from Mulback's. It's that multiplied by three, or four, or five. So, to answer your question about balancing the needs and the priorities, we are already ahead of our GMA goals. That's a good thing. I also think that we need to plan carefully so that we don't tip our hand too far and get more GMA goals thrust upon us, but also do a good job of taking advantage of this pause that we have, that we've unfortunately been thrown into with the loss of Mulback's, to reevaluate what this means for the future of the city, because this really does put a wrench in what was a very nice vision. So, there's a huge opportunity to make something great out of this, or screw it up. And I'd like to be part of the team that makes something great out of it.
Thank you. You can, since you spoke, interviewed, you can stay, or you can leave if you want. Next candidate, please. Hi. You can state your name, and then we're gonna, each council member has a question. It's the same question that we've asked all other candidates, and we'll start with Councilmember Evans.
My name is Josephine Martin, and I live over in the Woodin Creek Development.
Great, thank you so much. To effectively plan for Woodenville's current and future requirements, we need commissioners who can evaluate the facts presented, weigh the benefits and trade-offs to the taxpayers of Woodenville, and who understand that growth must happen per the Growth Management Act or GMA. Our planning commissioners must not allow rumors, political agendas, organized social pressure, and disinformation to cloud their judgment. How will you ensure that you understand and fairly apply all applicable laws, codes, and approved growth plans, such as the Transportation Master Plan and the Housing Action Plan, when voting on Planning Commission recommendations?
That's a really good question. I think, as I get, after I get appointed, I think the major thing to consider is the views of the, you know, the public that I speak to, or any views of our local residents who actually have voices, and I'd be representing their voices, and then also just diving into that code, reading everything, being prepared, and then also leaning on my fellow commissioners, since they have experience on the commission, to see what is the protocol, how, where should I be looking, and what sources should I be reading to make sure everything is accurate and well-presented?
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you. In one, in your view, what is an important planning issue facing the city, and what are some ideas you have to address this issue?
I think an important planning issue facing the city is maintaining our open spaces and our residential zoning, while also making sure we grow densely in our downtown to promote walkability and create neighborhood spaces that are vibrant and diverse. Personally, as a member who, of our community who lives in the Woodin Creek Development, it's amazing to walk around and see my neighbors outside at Sidekick getting ice cream, walking to Haggen. I run into other people who I get coffee with, and that's really amazing, seeing it builds community. And I think as we continue to grow, that's going to be our major, a major priority for our city, is making sure that we can continue to build those community spaces while also maintaining our other community spaces, such as those neighborhoods that are existing, because it's so vital that those members of our community continue to be a part of our community, since they bring so much to the table as well. I think it's really encouraging to see the current developments that are happening, and I want to make sure that those developments continue to happen.
Thank you.
Tiffany Marinoff.
Woodenville is a growing community with many perspectives that require balancing the needs of a rural community, nearby agricultural community, and a growing urban area that we all need to respond to as a planning community. What new, unique, or missing perspective would you bring to the Planning Commission?
I think the view I bring to the Planning Commission is a younger voice of the people that we are trying to encourage to move here. I am a member of the community who moved here a year and a half ago, straight out of college, to pursue my tech career. I have my partner who works locally in Woodenville in the industrial area, and we are new members of our community, and a lot of our neighbors are also new members of the community. And it's exciting to see growth happen and more people come into our community, and I think as we continue to grow, it's important to bring in people as well as supporting the people that are currently here who are working. So, making sure that development happens that is affordable, so that young residents and the children of current residents can continue to live in Woodenville.
Thank you. Councilmember Beth Campbell.
In the past few years, we've seen the loss of retail and commercial jobs and space as sites have been redeveloped. With the proposal of more development on the horizon, how do you propose the city manage growth to maintain and grow our commercial and industrial businesses?
I think development is always going to be happening, so we must make sure that it happens in a way that supports our community, and I think the best way for that to happen is mixed-use development. So, I'm talking, you know, ground-floor commercial and then residential on top, or large commercial developments with multi-floor businesses. That way, we are using all of our space, and it's dense and walkable, and it doesn't need to be, you know, a strip mall with lots of parking. I'm thinking, you have a parking garage, you have your businesses, and it's a place where you go, you park, and then you adventure through our town. I was recently in Leavenworth for Christmas, and we parked once, and we walked everywhere, and it was beautiful, because you didn't exactly have a plan for the day, you just ventured through, and, you know, you're wine tasting, you do your shopping. And I think as we continue to develop, we need to look for development that creates reasons for people to stay longer. So, if they're coming for one store, we should encourage them to park and then walk to other stores after they visit that place. So, if they're going to one winery, why not make a tasting at multiple wineries an option? And, once you've had some alcohol, you don't want to be driving to another winery, you want to make it walkable. So, that's main, my, my main focus, is creating places that are lively and dense, so that people come and they stay longer. And I think as we prioritize that density, we can also prioritize other zones for industrial uses. I also frequent Molten Works, which is in our industrial area, and they do glasswork. And I think it's really amazing that we can have that in our city as well as these vibrant restaurants.
Councilmember Art.
Thank you. Given the city's need to plan for affordable housing at all levels, what actions do you think the city should be undertaking to meet these goals? Excuse me.
Yes, affordable housing is a really complex issue, and I think our city needs to make sure that we're flexible and willing to try new things. A lot of other cities around us are also dealing with the same issue, so anything that they are doing that works, we should also try. And that means we need to set minimums and hold developers to those minimums. We can reward them with extra good things after they meet those minimums, and I think that's how we achieve affordable housing at the most basic level, but also, we have to look at what our workers in Woodenville can afford. So, that might be different forms of housing. We might have residents that, you know, want to move out of apartments but can't afford a full home, so we need to have townhouses, we need to have ownership opportunities, so that our residents continue to stay in Woodenville. I personally have a really good friend of mine in my book club who bought a house and is in Woodenville, but another member of our book club is not going to be able to stay in Woodenville, because she can't afford to live here anymore in the house. And with a growing family, you got to have more space. So, I think as we grow and we look to solve our affordable housing, we need to look at diverse options of housing, such as townhouses, ownership opportunities within apartment complexes, multi-family units, so that anybody can live here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi. I've got a two-part question. Are you familiar with the city motto, "Country living, city style"?
I am.
Okay. What does this mean to you as a planning commissioner?
This means we need to focus on maintaining our open spaces. Part of the reason why I moved here is that we have a fantastic trail system, and when I look out, you're the roundabouts, you know, it's right over there, you can see Mount Rainier on a clear day, and it's beautiful. And maintaining those big spaces where you have flower fields that you can walk to from the Samamish River, that's so important to the reason why people come to Woodenville, and we need to make sure that those continue to exist, and don't get overdeveloped, developed in, you know, our development zones, not in our farms.
Thank you. Last question. Tell us why you want to be on Planning, and I know you've answered some of this, and also, how would you approach balancing the growth we're experiencing, King County is experiencing, and preserving the Woodenville character?
Okay. I want to be on Planning, because I view it as the best way for me to make an impact on the city and give back to the city. I've really enjoyed living here, and I think going forward, Planning Commission makes the biggest impact on City Council, since it is an advisory role. And I view it as the best way for us to prioritize and maintain our current view of Woodenville. So, the community you see when you go to the parades and the winter fests and all the summer fests, that's because Woodenville is such a beautiful place to live, and I think we need to be strategic in our development to make sure that our community continues to stay a community and continues to grow vibrantly, and encourage more people to come to Woodenville.
Thank you. Appreciate you volunteering. We have one more candidate, you can say if you'd like.
Grab my water here.
Hello, welcome. If you could state your name, and then each council member's going to have an opportunity to ask you the same question that we've asked all candidates. So, state your name, and the first question will go to Councilmember Evans.
My name's Kurt Cooper.
Thank you so much for your time tonight. So, for my question, "To effectively plan for Woodenville's current and future requirements, we need commissioners who can evaluate the facts presented, weigh the benefits and trade-offs to the taxpayers of Woodenville, and who understand that growth must happen per the Growth Management Act or GMA. Our planning commissioners must not allow rumors, political agendas, organized social pressure, and disinformation to cloud their judgment. How will you ensure that you understand and fairly apply all applicable laws, codes, and approved growth plans, such as the Transportation Plan and the Housing Action Plan, when voting on Planning Commission recommendations?"
I think it comes down to focus. How does one remain focused, either as an individual, or as a team, or as a government entity? During my 30-year Navy career, I had the opportunity to work on an admiral's staff locally to evaluate potential sites in Washington State for a new Navy base. Obviously, this, this was years ago, 1980, '83. You can bet there was a lot of distraction going on, a lot of politicking, it was huge. And it wasn't just limited to Washington State, it was also Oregon. But what won the Navy over was they realized the great, tremendous public support from the Everett community, which helped Everett be selected as the site of that future Navy base. But like you mentioned, it comes down to facts, analysis, building coalitions, basically staying focused, I think is going to be the biggest challenge in any political environment, of which this is one.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you. In your view, what is an important planning issue facing the city at this time, and what are some ideas you have on how to address that issue?
Last month, the city of Woodenville reported that Mulback's would not be part of the Green Partners Cascade development, and shortly afterwards, Mulback's stated they would close. This situation reminds me of the Seattle Commons Project, so we're going back to the late '80s, when voters turned down additional funding, which ended the commons. So, I'm talking about the South Lake Union neighborhood, and parts of Belltown. The city of Seattle began working with Paul Allen to conserve portions of that project which were built, and provide many unique outdoor spaces in the South Lake Union neighborhood, along with the residential and business developments. So, my feeling is, and this is what propelled me to apply for this position, it's a rare opportunity in one's lifetime and a lifetime of a city, to preserve the essence of what I think Mulback's represented, and this, and this city represents in general, a green space, an open space, where commerce and community may continue to grow, it'll have an impact not only on Woodenville, but the Pacific Northwest and beyond.
Thank you. Debbie Marinoff.
Woodenville is a growing community with many perspectives that require balancing the need of rural community, a nearby agricultural community, and a growing urban area that we all need to respond to as a planning community. What new, unique, or missing perspectives would you bring to the Planning Commission?
As a sole practitioner architect, I've utilized land use plans, policies, and programs, and interpreted zoning codes for my clients. So, I'm familiar with the technical side of the business, so to speak. And as a construction project manager, I further developed my expertise in the planning, design, and construction of public projects for federal, state, local governments, as well as large corporations and nonprofits like Amazon and Providence Hospital. Those are the hard skills. The soft skills are coalition building, being attuned to what's going on in the public realm, collaborating with this body here, with staff, obviously with the rest of the Planning Commission. So, like a lot of positions, I feel you need a mix of skills, and I can provide that.
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
In the past few years, we've seen the loss of retail and commercial jobs and space as sites have been redeveloped. With the prospect of more development on the horizon, how do you propose the city manage growth to maintain and grow our commercial and industrial businesses? growth to maintain and grow our commercial and industrial businesses?
My understanding is more people commute to Woodinville every day than commute out, which was a huge surprise when I was speaking with somebody over the summer at one of the markets here in Planning Commission. So it's already happening. How do we preserve that? More people are working at home, so we can count those individuals as well. There's a Growth Management Act for this state. The city is more recently updating their plans. So you need a working knowledge of what the plans are in order to better enact them. And if there's some changes required, you make the recommendation to council, and you guys get to decide along with staff how to proceed forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Art.
Thank you. Given the city's need for affordable housing at all levels, what actions do you think the city should be undertaking to meet those goals?
When I first came up to Seattle to be the Admiral's aide, I found out about Pike Place Market, and I lived there. And I had neighbors who were considered Section 8 housing. The only difference between my apartment and theirs at the time was I had a dishwasher, they didn't, kind of ludicrous, but be it as it may. So I'm familiar with the kind of folks who would qualify for those type of apartments, and it worked out great. There's a senior center in Pike Market, same kind of conditions. There's availability of funds either at the federal level through HUD, King County Housing Authority. The resources are out there, it's how to tap into it. And yes, there should be affordable housing. We see what's happening with Seattle, where folks in a lower economic level are basically priced out of the market. So if we want to have a mix of industry and tech, and even agricultural here, we need to have something that's affordable for folks.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor.
Sure. It's a two-part question. So are you familiar with the city motto, "Country Living, City Style"?
Yeah, it's right out in the lobby.
Good. Okay. What does this mean to you as a planning commissioner?
I think it's evolving. I lived next door in District Flats, and I've looked at the history of this area. I've walked along the Samamish River Trail and learned how the railroad came through, and then 522 became the first paved road to get down to Seattle. We're way beyond that, and it's getting an idea of what that looks like, preserving some of the open space, the so-called "country living," but also know that, well, like me, it's nice to, I can walk out of my apartment and, okay, there's wine tasting rooms. It's just having the density of development, to have those opportunities. And I think Woodinville is a great example of that. It's all there, but you need to plan for it, because like Councilmember Rachel mentioned, it can disappear. It's due to, there's development pressures. So there's a plan. If we follow a plan, we can enact the plan or keep the plan going.
Thank you. Last question, some of us redundant, and by the way, I spent a lot of time at Naval Station Everett in my past. Tell us why you want to be on Planning Commission, and how would you approach balancing the growth that we're experiencing and preserving the Woodinville character?
Woodinville is an important crossroads in the development of this plot of land that we've talked about. And it's located right in the heart of our community and soon going to be vacant. There's going to be an incredible amount of pressure to develop that once MOLBAX has moved out. But I see this as a huge opportunity for the commission to support the council and staff in planning an even better project while reaching out to gain the support of not only local individuals and organizations, but also those at the regional and national level. The perspective I bring is, I talked before about it, is the technical skills, but also the soft skills. And also, it helps to further diversify the commission to represent a variety of backgrounds, perspectives, and skills. So growth versus preservation, there's a plan. How you enact the plan will result in a town that we all enjoy and live in in the future.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you for volunteering for the Planning Commission. You can stay, we're going to have a vote, and you can stay or you can be excused, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, do I run this? Okay. So let's, I'll open it up to nominations, they don't have to be seconded, same as Mayor and Deputy Mayor. Open up for nominations for Planning Commissioner.
I nominate Sharon Peterson.
I nominate Josephine Martin.
Any further nominations? Seeing none. Let's have a roll call vote for Sharon Peterson.
Can we have a discussion?
Discussion is not like...
Yeah, Mr. Ganson can maybe provide some insight on this. In the past, we've typically talked about if there's any, I think what you see is kind of the highlights of the qualifications for the position.
Okay.
Kind of limit it to that.
Is it two, five minutes? Is that what we're, type of thing?
You certainly can. You can just go down and write.
I can go down the list?
Yep.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Before we get started, point of order, I've just had a question about when we normally do the vote, if there's two candidates, do we just say what the candidate, so we don't do one vote and another vote, we do one vote with both of the candidates and say their name?
I think with two candidates, it's probably, and I've seen it done a myriad of different ways, I think that certainly makes sense when we have two candidates, to indicate which individual you'd be supporting.
Okay, fair enough. Open up to any discussion. Okay, seeing none. Why don't we do the roll call vote?
Councilmember Evans.
Josephine Martin.
Councilmember Edwards.
Josephine Martin.
Councilmember Wes Campbell.
Sharon Peterson.
Mayor Melman.
Josephine Martin.
Councilmember Art.
Josephine Martin.
Councilmember Taylor.
Sharon Peterson.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you. I want to thank all, everybody that applied and took the time, I really appreciate it. Thank you for volunteering, and congratulations, Ms. Martin. Thank you very much. Next business item, amending council rules of procedure. Mr. Buchanan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This evening is the first touch on this item, provided in your council rules with which you are all familiar. Section 8.5 mandates that every, first quarter of every even-numbered year, council review the council rules for any necessary or recommended changes. That's the beginning of this conversation this evening. Of course, no changes are necessary, but this is the opportunity provided for in your council rules, your currently adopted council rules, to review those periodically. Typically, in the past, we have, staff has highlighted any particular issues of note that for council consideration. One that I mentioned in your staff report this evening, and I don't know that there's extensive amount of revisions necessary for this one, but to kick off the conversation, and this circles around public comment, and in no ways looking to curtail the amount of public comment available, but this is in response to the growing experience of many of our peer jurisdictions in the area and across the country with the advent of the more robust remote participation, where unfortunately, we've had individuals, and in fact, AI, in some cases, use those public comment opportunities for vile and disgusting hate speech, and that's become a more and more common thing. We cannot, as it's outlined in your staff reports, simply eliminate that opportunity for virtual public comment by virtue of an RCW that was passed in the height of the pandemic. But we have some measures in place to try to protect against some of that Zoom bombing, if you will, the hate speech that other jurisdictions have experienced. For example, in our code, we currently require that in order to give virtual public comment, you need to sign up for that opportunity by 6:30 the evening of the meeting. That's one kind of hurdle, I think, that helps protect against that to the extent possible. Of course, we can't guard against all threats in that manner. One suggestion there, and it's alluded to, but maybe strengthening in that language, if council sees fit, is a requirement that you also, when you sign up for that, indicate what your topic of conversation is and that it pertains to city business, just as one more potential safeguard to make sure that this is somebody that has local interest and is speaking to a local, or a topic of local interest, for example. So that's one topic that I just raised for council consideration and discussion. The process typically would be, we have this discussion this evening, council raises any desired changes or desires for some edits to the language. Myself, Mr. Ganson, and others would go back and do some massage and come up with some language for council to consider at a future meeting. So this would be, again, that first step in that conversation.
Okay. Thank you. Opening up for some discussion, Councilmember Wes Campbell.
What's our current policy if someone who is a remote speaker or standing at the podium starts to launch into hate speech? I know for Zoom calls, we have the master mute button, but what policy is in place to stop, stop all of this, nipping it in the bud, I guess, instead of going the, what I think, nuclear route, which is to sort of require people to have an idea of what they want to talk about before the meeting? What do we have in place to safeguard right now?
I think you touched on a couple pieces there. One of them is, I'm not aware of any, of course, meetings can get heated, we haven't experienced it to the extent that many jurisdictions I know have, can get heated within person, but I think by and large, this Zoom bombing has happened virtually because they get to hide behind, in a nominee, right there, behind their keyboard, and don't have to show up in person. So I think it's less of a threat in person. That being said, however, of course, we do have rules about decorum, and up to and including in your council rules, the chair, the presiding officer's ability to recess the meeting and clear the room if necessary, if it got to that level. So we do have that ability for in-person as well. Again, this is, I think, this particular topic, whether it's virtual or in-person, is about trying to create as many safeguards as possible, but also understanding that we're not going to be able to stop everything if somebody is just really intent on doing something.
I guess one more follow-up. So all of us have had to do the click the three pictures that look like a bicycle to prove that you're not an AI bot. Is there some sort of safeguard that we can put into place before virtual comments to make that less likely? But also, I'm not sure that we're fixing a problem. I think we're thinking that there's a problem, and thus, thinking there's a problem, we're looking for a solution to a problem we don't have. So is there a way that we can put in some, please click on the bicycles and prove you're not a computer?
Yeah, I think we can look at that. I think based on, just one of the first ones that I heard about in the area was the city of Kenmore when they experienced, and I went on to listen to that meeting, and that was not AI, that was somebody calling from somewhere in the world who was able to respond and adjust their comments unfortunately in real time. And so they had, they had got past the different security protocols in place, and I don't know, I don't have extensive background on what Kenmore has in place. But in that instance, the click on the three pictures thing wouldn't have made a difference. I don't know that that system's available, it's something we can certainly research for the AI piece of it, but I think there are going to be still those actors who can get to hide behind a keyboard somewhere virtually in the world and get to say whatever vile and disgusting thing they want if they get their couple minutes of airtime.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
I have a couple of things that I want to talk about for council rules, but for the public comment thing, as a democracy, we sometimes have assholes, and we have to deal with them from time to time. But limiting the voice of other citizens and limiting the ability, especially based on what we have input into, codified by our rules, like people who can't make it in, people who are unavailable, people who represent demographics who can't come to a nine o'clock meeting. I think removing that is a displacement of democracy, so I'd be against changing this at all.
Yeah, and to be clear, I'm in no way advocating that we stop doing this, right? I think it's about putting the appropriate safeguards in place, and we have some of them already. I think the one that I would potentially strengthen, and we can work on some language for council consideration, is around clearly and explicitly stating your topic of, that you want to discuss with the council. That's not explicitly called for that I see in those rules. We do already have some of those kind of safeguards. Again, you need to sign up by 6:30 the evening, that's going to, somebody may not go to that trouble if they can do, avoid that by going to the neighboring jurisdiction, for example, right? So again, not in any way advocating that we limit or restrict public comment in any way, it's about how do we make sure that legitimate public comment about legitimate city business is what we're receiving and not somebody's hate speech.
Yeah, thank you for that clarity. And I think we've talked about, even when we did this initially, was having a form that people could fill out, a name, I wanted a dress, but I note that that can be difficult. But everything that's on our current form should be part of that, and you can't get beyond it without giving that info, and we have some validator, so.
Yeah, you know, as the chair running the meeting, what would be helpful is some of those safeguards, because it's my understanding that the Kenmore meeting went to like 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, and it was awful, according to the people. I would like to be proactive and put in place things that would prevent that without stifling public comment. And I think it's reasonable, we already have it in our rules, that the council prioritizes residents or business owners in Woodinville. That's already, so we should have that in public comment as well as virtual comment, that criteria, so that we could maintain that emphasis. Also, I think having the topic of what they want to speak to would be just a minimal requirement. I wouldn't even call that a roadblock, but I think that would be helpful when we're going through eliciting commentary. And I think both those requirements in public comment are very minimal and should be required, whether you're speaking in person or virtually. So I'd like to, I'd like to see that. And any other safeguards, technically, that we could assure us that if things did get out of hand, that we could, you know, if it was AI or Zoom bombing or something that is not city business, we should be able to put a stop to that somehow, or mitigate that, because I don't think anybody here wants to go through a meeting that goes 2:00, 3:00 in the morning with a lot of non-city business hate speech. So that's my, Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, I agree that whatever we decide to do, we need to make sure that it doesn't make it too hard for people, or discourages them from wanting to make public comment online or virtually. But also, I know there's a high bar for actually cutting someone off during a meeting, because it has to rise level of disrupting the meeting. I heard that's a pretty high bar to meet, so we need to be careful also about coming up with plans that if it does happen, where that line is, because I understand it's a pretty high bar to meet sometimes as well.
Councilmember Art.
Thank you. I'm just thinking through which of these precautions would actually stop someone whose intent is to disrupt or, you know, use their time to spew hate speech. So trying to balance the needs for putting some precautions in there and knowing that ultimately, it wouldn't actually stop an actor who has bad intentions. But I do support the idea of asking commenters to write their topic of conversation and that it should be city business, but not necessarily limited to the agenda of the evening. So I think that is an important distinction to have, that it shouldn't have to be limited to what we as a council are talking about, but it should be limited to city topics.
Do you have enough guidance on that, do you think? Okay. Any other discussion? I have a couple of things that I would think should be addressed. One of them, one of them is 11.1. We have a rule that I think violates OPMA rules on a regular basis. It's access to fellow council members' emails. It's access to fellow council members' emails. So if a council member emails two other council members, it automatically goes to a, a fourth council member and is often forwarded to a fifth, which is an OPMA violation and a chain email. And I think that's, that's a rule that we, we should, we should actually eliminate, because we don't want any fines with OPMA violations. That's one I'd like to see addressed. And then when an agenda item, we have a rule that before 13 days, any two council members can put an agenda item on city business, which I, I want to preserve that ability. But we need to make sure that there's sufficient time and information provided to staff at the city manager's discretion, so that staff can prepare a presentation and the background and information, so that we can ask staff, because if a council member's making a presentation, we are not allowed by council rules to have a conversation and ask direct questions of another council member. So in the interest of transparency and efficiency and knowledge and, and information to the public as well as other council members, we, we, we need sufficient time to be able to review and discuss and ask questions of our experts and look at it. So I'd like, I'd like that one to be addressed as well. Any other? Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, on the topic of the email, any council member can opt out. So I know that most opt out, so that there is no opportunity for, for, I guess, violation of OPMA. But also, there's a lot of information that comes to council to specific member that is very useful as a council member. And I think that, I think we should leave that as a personal decision of the council members, because otherwise it turns into, how do we get that other than a FOIA? We used to have that, and it used to be continual FOIAs that were coming from the bench or the dais. And is that something that, that maybe Katie can talk to, but would we be able to get like a weekly digest of mail that was coming through?
To speak to the current amount of public disclosure requests and how broad a lot of them are, they easily take two-plus months to fulfill. And I, you know, have a great system that tracks and I'm able to route them through staff, but specifically when it's communications primarily emails, it is a very laborious task. And I can give you an example with one that I get on a pretty regular basis, and I'm really happy when I get it done within two months. So I, and it's not necessarily even seven potential email boxes that I would be looking to get that information, so I don't see how I could process something that quickly.
Okay, so you could not process for the council. So I would be against that, because there's a lot of pertinent information that's coming around. For example, MOBAX or some of that that comes in through, it doesn't come to the council, it comes to a direct person, and it's good to see that general information. So it would be a disservice, I think, to the council to adopt.
Yep. Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Mr. City Manager, could you or Mr. Ganson actually speak to the rules of chain meetings and how email would apply?
I'm happy to address that. I, I understand the concern around that. You've all had my training at one point or another on open government and on the OPMA. And one of the pieces that I, I emphasize as part of that when we're talking about the OPMA is just how broad the definition of action is. Action of the governing body that must take place in an open public meeting. And, you know, it's receipt of public testimony, but also deliberations, discussions, consideration, review, et cetera. So it's really broadly defined. And if a quorum of the council is involved in action as defined, in a setting that isn't an open public meeting, that's a violation, right? So I think automatically distributing all council member emails to other, like to take the most extreme case, if every council member's email was just automatically distributed to all other council members, it does provide some opportunity for violation of the OPMA in the sense that, for example, a council member might know that that's happening, or even in a less extreme case, addressing an email to two other council members, but knowing that two others have opted in to receive all of the emails. In that situation, that council member can, whether intentionally or not, use that as an opportunity to engage in OPMA action. That is, in essence, engage in a deliberation or a discussion or a consideration of a, a matter of city business that should be happening in an open public meeting. So it's a, some of that could be inadvertent, or it could be sort of more or less intentional to, to try to have, sort of perhaps broadcast an argument on a policy issue, you know, ostensibly only sending it to less than a quorum, but knowing that that's going to reach more than, you know, reach a quorum of the council members. So I, I think there's some legitimacy to that concern. From a non-legal point, I would just say that in my years of doing this work with lots of local public agencies, the sort of provision is, I was surprised when I saw it, when I came on board, it's, I can't think of another example of it.
But given all that said, if someone was to come to us that wanted to actually say something from a legal point of view, do they need intention, or is it just the actuality of that communication going out to something that creates a quorum?
Um, well, a violation of the act, generally it must be knowing, at least for there to be individual liability. And the courts do look at the intentions of individual officials when they're looking at violations and gauging penalties. So I think intentionality is a relevant aspect to it. But there are also situations where a council or a governing body can, you know, entirely accidentally end up in a violation, because while the, the issue simply wasn't on their radar. So for example, a council member who has opted in and is receiving emails that aren't addressed to them, perhaps if they then turn around and respond, you know, in just a, a moment of not thinking, not remembering their training, you could unintentionally engage, you know, end up being the fourth person engaged in that discussion, and then you have a quorum and you have a violation.
Thank you for that clarity.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
Councilmember Evans has her hand up, she can go first.
Councilmember Art? Oh, Evans, sorry. Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. So on this quorum, I heard you say that whether intentional or not, so if I were to send something to the mayor and the deputy mayor and another council member's opted in, which I may or may not know about, my intention is to speak to the mayor and the deputy mayor, not to the other person, but you're saying that that could be a violation, correct?
Right. And, and remember, there are multiple potential consequences for an OPMA violation. One is individual liability for a knowing violation. But there's also, for any violation, the, whatever the underlying action is and any actions flowing from it are void if there's been a violation in that action. And so you could have a policy issue or perhaps a issue of do we buy some property? And if the discussion that happens in a, in a, in a way that violates the OPMA, sort of underpins a final action the council takes, you can have a situation where that action, all of that action may be void, and, and you can have some really serious unintended consequences in that sort of a situation.
Thank you for that clarification. I have another area that I'd like to pivot to, which is decorum on the dais. So I would just like to, Mr. Ganson, get some of your perspective on some feedback that we've gotten from the public. For example, council members making faces, rolling eyes, doing all sorts of bodily things when people are giving public comment. Is there any rules of decorum on that? And then the second one is council members playing video or being disruptive while on the dais as other council members are speaking, and are there any rules of decorum on that?
So in terms of, I guess, decorum, you know, you, section 11.2 in the rules addresses decorum and says council members are strongly encouraged to exercise principles of general decorum and defines decorum to mean politeness, courtesy, professionalism, avoidance of personal insults, et cetera. All of that is couched in terms of strongly encouraged, because as elected council members, you have a, a legal right to your seat and you have speech rights. And if you violate the rules that you have all, if, if a member, an individual member violates the rules that everyone has agreed to abide by, what are the consequences for that? They're largely political. Censure is a possibility, or also just, you know, the electorate of the city, perhaps being unimpressed by the conduct of a particular council member on the dais and, and representation of, of them, could result in a political, political consequence at the ballot box. But most of the, you know, when we're talking about any sorts of consequences for violation of these rules, there's a, there's a big distinction between the public, who, you know, for instance, in the context of public comments, we can prevent disruption. Things get extremely dicey when that disruption is coming from the dais. And so, and again, most of the remedies are going to be political.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I didn't answer the second part of your question around use of devices. There is section 11.3, so the next section in the rules addresses the use of devices and, and just generally states that, you know, on the dais, council members agree not to use, you know, they can use computers and tablets and devices for, you know, business during the city council meeting, but should not use those to communicate using text messaging or social media. Shall, shall not make or receive personal private phone calls or emails while at the dais. Shall not communicate in any electronic format with another council member during a council member, during a council meeting. Obviously, that's a huge OPMA concern, but I think there's a sense of decorum that's embedded in that section as well. But again, with the, with the same conundrum around how, how you enforce that as against one of your members.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
So we're all concerned about emails, but I think the big glaring problem we have is Facebook, where we have four council members who are in a particular group, and they have conversations that not everyone can see. Some council members are blocked, some are not available in that group, and there are conversations and discussions that occur there. We're not talking about eliminating Facebook, because that doesn't embarrass council members, email does. My perspective on email has always been, if you write it, everyone should see it. And whatever you type in an email, if it was posted on the city's website, you should be happy to have it posted there. And if it doesn't make you happy, maybe consider thinking before you send it. I am unaware of any particular lawsuit, any complaint about a violation of quorum or action being taken from emails. It's not great to live in a fishbowl, but that's the job we have. We work in a fishbowl. I think that we should always err on the side of more transparency as opposed to less, and it would be on the council member who commits the violation to pay the fine. City would not have to pay the fine, it would be on the individual. So my feeling is, let's keep it as open as possible, let's stop trying to tap dance around the fact that we want to be able to do things and not necessarily have certain council members know what we're up to. I'm happy to forward each and every email I have ever sent, I don't have any problem with it. So this tap dancing, it feels a little contrived. I know it's going to pass, because that's already been decided. This iron curtain that's coming down, I'm not a fan of. This is, we had a conversation about, well, now do we tell people that they can't speak at our meetings and about what? And now we're saying, well, now we also know that there are certain council members, and you know who you are, because you might lift an eyebrow or you might grimace, you might make a face, you're not entitled to this information, and if you do have it, you're obviously an embarrassment. So I say, we're all adults here. If there's something that you don't want passed on to the city in an email, don't send it.
Point of order, the council member mentioned something is going to pass. This is currently discussion that we're giving.
This is currently just discussion that we're, we're in, given to staff to entertain, to bring back those recommendations in the future, correct?
That's right. As I mentioned, when we got to this agenda item, so this is the first piece, council's talking about potential items they'd like to be edited or amended. We'll take that back and bring back potential language based on what we hear this evening for council consideration at a future meeting.
Thank you. I just like, since I brought it up, I just like a point of clarification, and I think I have a pretty good example of what I'm talking about. So recently, we had a bridge subcommittee of three members, and that was three members specifically because we couldn't have a quorum discussing a business item like the bridge discussion. During that discussion, we had, I had emailed the two other subcommittee members topics and, and, and discussion about the bridge, including graphics and what we liked. And so there's a lot of discussion going on about a, a city business, this, in this case, a subcommittee that we set up purposely without a quorum, the bridge. And it's my understanding that those emails addressed to two other council members automatically went to a fourth council member, which is an OPMA violation.
Point of order, this is an accusation of conducting a serial meeting? What are we, is there evidence to back the claim, or is this a supposition?
That's not a point of order, but that's exactly what happens. The emails I confirmed today automatically go to a fourth council member, which, as Mr. Ganson said, is an OPMA violation if we're discussing city business. So, and, and, and we have paid fines, the city has paid fines for OPMA violations in the past, we need to avoid that. And whether you like the OPMA rules or not, we can't be party to having rules that automatically and routinely violate them. So I'm, I'm strongly urging us to consider eliminating those OPMA violations. Any other discussion? Councilmember Taylor.
If, if we have four people reading, that's not a discussion and that's not an OPMA violation, because anything that's written, as Councilmember Best Campbell mentioned, is transparent and available to everyone on the council and also available to anyone in the public that makes that request to look at it through a FOIA. And we've all been subject to FOIAs in the past. This is just, I think it makes it easier on Katie if the council isn't requesting this information as, as routine FOIAs, just because we've turned off our email system. And, and that's what I think would result. There would be a weekly FOIA request coming down, and, and I don't think that's something we want.
Any other discussion about rules? Deputy Mayor Randolph.
I have to jump in again here, because we had a note that we wanted to propose amendment to where we say January of even. that we wanted to propose amendment to where we say January of even numbered years. We wanted to give an appropriate ramp up and flexibility. So we wanted to do some changes there. And I think this was one of the things that you had brought to our attention, Mr. City Manager.
I'll have to go back and review what my suggestion on that one might have been. I know one of them, we've changed in a recent iteration of this, maybe two years ago, was the, the period for when we have this conversation. And originally, I think it was in January of everyone, and we pushed that out to, I think it says the first quarter of every even numbered year right now. So I think if that was what it was, I think we're covered on that piece.
Yeah, if, if it's already been moderated, no, it's no action to take. But also about consent items, provision 7.3, where you can say no, no and consent seem to conflict a little bit to me. I would love for any council members who is dissenting, at least give us some level of feedback as to why there's a dissent. And we give them 30 seconds to a minute to respond or at least make a, rather than pull it off, because we know that pulling it off, it can take a while to, to go through it as an agenda item. I would prefer an action where if I am, I am objecting to something, I'm able to say why. Because just saying no doesn't explain to the public and doesn't give the level of transparency that I think should be given.
Mr. Ganson, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that particular suggestion.
So this is a provision that's unique to your rules. I'm not sure how it develops this way. Pretty universally, consent calendar items are an up or down vote en masse. And the solution of a council member has a problem with a particular item is the ability for the, a single council member to pull any item off of the consent calendar. So we're already kind of in a unique area with this. I would, we certainly could come up with a revision that provides a council member who wants to record a no on a consent item to, to have an opportunity if they want to offer a brief explanation for their no vote. The other, you know, I don't think that you can require an explanation because again, it's a, a speech issue, just as we can't require a council member to vote on any particular item. But you could provide that brief opportunity to explain the vote. The other approach is if, if there's a thought that there really needs to be a fleshing out of an issue because we're not sure why a council member is objecting to a particular item, any other member can pull that item from the consent calendar and make it a, a normal business item.
With that cleared, I would just about say it's, it's worth pulling items off. I have to say that I've gotten some interesting perspectives about pulling calendar items off where I did not know why people were voting no. So that would be a direction that I would, I would give to staff as well is that just the no with no explanation is not helpful for other members of the council or the public.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
Agenda preparation. I know that there are cities much larger than us who have more than a long weekend to prepare for a meeting. I know that puts an onus on staff to have an agenda prepared more than four days ahead of time, but I think it would be very helpful for us to have the agenda a few days earlier, only because on Fridays, sometimes half the staff is not working. It's their flex Friday. We have all weekends to not have questions answered. We can send an email on Monday and a lot of times staff is busy, imagine this, doing the work of the city and is not able to get back to us until before the meeting. And the point of getting these agendas ahead of time is that we have this opportunity to address questions ahead of time and not have to air everything here. There's, there are things that we can get clarified ahead of time. So I would ask that we have a little bit more time, if possible, to go over the agenda in as much as it gives us more time to ask questions and flesh out some of the answers, which is the whole point of getting the agenda ahead of time and not having it dumped on us here.
So that, I believe, would be a section 8.4 where talks, yeah, the preliminary agenda items will be submitted to city manager in early than Wednesday at 1:00 PM, 13 days preceding the meeting. This is when council members submit them. The finalized agenda in the meeting packet should be available at city hall by 5:00 PM, at least five days before the next council meeting. So that would be on the Thursdays preceding the Tuesday council meetings, if I'm doing the math right, which is generally obviously what we strive for. I know occasionally we hit that Friday. I, I don't disagree with you at all. I think the, the one challenge, and this is always that balancing act, is if we don't hit that, then items are getting pushed. And sometimes those items, we're frantically putting those together right up until that deadline. That's the only trade off if, if we push that date further. That's always the goal, but depending on what's going on, that's not always the attainable goal.
Anything further? Okay, I think, Councilmember Mark.
Sorry, I just wanted to add a comment on that last item. I, it's always nice to have material further in advance, so you have more, more time to prepare, but I understand the pressures of the staff on that. It has very much been appreciated when we can get certain items in advance, especially lengthier ones, ones that have been prepared in advance. It's been very appreciated and I would hope that can continue. Thank you.
Okay, looks like that's about it. Lots of, lots of input there for you. Next business item, discussion of 2024, 25 council member committee assignments. Mr. Hill.
All right, thank you. Just give me one second for this to load. Perfect. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. For this item, we are going to be introducing the 2024, 2025 council member assignments. In your packet, you will see a list of all the committee assignments and the current designees. We are hoping that council can review the list of committee openings and contact the mayor with any positions that you wish to serve on. Then he will present a slate for your consideration at the next meeting. Since council is meeting on the ninth, I would kindly ask that you please send him your list at your soonest convenience. On the screen here, you can see the current assignments. And in addition, your packet includes committee descriptions as well. Over the next few days, please feel free to contact me with any questions or contact, and contact the mayor with which committees you have interest in serving on. These various positions are critical for Woodinville to continue to have an increased voice in the region and planning taking place throughout King County. Vontaging your time to serve in these capacities is greatly appreciated. And taking the time to go through these and reach out with any questions is something we are happy to assist you with.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions? I'll just add, I did this two years ago and it, it worked. It was, it was a juggling act, but council members sent me their priority items and committees that they wished to be on, and I tried to put people in areas that they emphasize and had an area of expertise or a passion for and balance the workload. So that had about three or four different scratching off and replacing people when I saw somebody was overloaded or, and then there's always conflicts of requests on who wants to be on what. So sooner the better that I get your priorities will allow me, in a very short period of time, to put together the assignments for council to vote on. So I appreciate it sooner than later. So, and I appreciate, and, and I want to thank you for whatever role that you're going to step up in. So, thank you. Okay. Let's see. Number 12, Association of Washington Cities, AWC City Action Days, delegation, Washington, DC Legislative Visit. Mr. Hill again.
All right, good evening again. With AWC City Action Days and the DC Legislative Visit on the horizon, staff is asking council to select a delegation for each of these advocacy efforts. AWC City Action Days is a chance for council members to interact with statewide colleagues and educate statewide decision, statewide decision makers about our 2024 legislative priorities. In 2023, council sent three representatives and did a day trip down to Olympia. The event is organized by AWC and has a great chance to continue to communicate the needs and voices of Woodinville residents. On your screen here, you can see that the event is taking place February 7th and 8th, and the city has participated in the last seven years. Your legislative priorities that council passed just a few weeks back is going to be the tool that we use to communicate our advocacy efforts with the legislature and continue to advocate for moving, move ahead Washington funds to be pushed forward from WashDOT. This is a great chance for important relationship building to take place and make sure our voice, voice is heard. And since it's in the middle of the legislative session, we're hoping we can communicate council's positions on topics such as TOD, East Rail, and other important topics. Next, we have our federal, oh, sorry. Next, we have our Washington, DC Legislative Visit. We have identified the dates of March 6th through the 8th as a prime opportunity to come, to go to DC and send a delegation. The city was a finalist in the 2023 RACE grant application and will be applying again and can advocate for the project at this time, as well as continue to advocate for the 134th and 195th Culvert Funds. I'm now going to pass it to Jake to touch on the importance of this trip. Jake Johnson's our federal lobbyist who is here with us today.
Hello, City.
You mind using the mic? Or, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, City. It's a one, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Appreciate the chance to talk to you all. I think Jared did a great job kind of laying out the, the reasons why we build these relationships with lawmakers at the, at the federal and state level. I am your federal lobbyist, and so I can say that at the federal level, the relational work that we do to talk about our projects one-on-one, both with the regional staff out here in the state and the DC and the committee and the policy staff back in DC, really helps kind of knit the, the lobbying strategy together. So as we're building support for these projects, making sure frankly that everybody's on the same page is the primary value of these meetings. When you go to DC, you have a chance to meet with not only the policy experts that are sorting through the various agenda items for the senators and the members of Congress, but also potentially getting direct access to the committee staff and working with the, the decision makers who are racking and stacking the priorities for funding. So we've seen this payoff directly for the city over the course of the last year, whether it was the rail banking issue and kind of the direct engagement of the Congresswoman's office, whether it was frankly, the RACE grant advocacy work that was done, the appropriations support that we've got. It just feels like we've got a solid foundation of an interconnected delegation standing up for the city of Woodinville. And these visits are a way to frankly, just invest in that and keep it moving forward. Happy to take any questions that, that the team has here.
Questions? I have one. So having done it last year, it was a real whirlwind, a day of travel and a full, long day and night of, of meetings and then a day of travel back. But to, to revisit, it, it was successful that we were able to finally get the permission to pull up the rail, which is an important part for Woodinville. We also received this year 2.5 million from a federal grant that Congresswoman Del Benny bought out. And then last I understood, we were, we, for the $5 million RACE grant, I think we were in line for only approved 800, 900,000 so far, waiting Congress to finalize our budget. Is that, is that, is my memory close?
Close, sir. The projects are a little bit inverted there. So the RACE grant, we, we were recommended for funding from the Grant Evaluation Committee. We made it to the secretary's desk, but we were not selected as part of the final funding package. That's the $5 million RACE planning grant that's listed on the agenda. The city is working hard to resubmit that application right now with an, I believe, an application deadline of February 28th. Am I getting that right? And so we're putting that, that package back together again with the delegation's enthusiastic support. The other issue is the Culvert funding request. These are FY '24 appropriations requests. The city has successfully been funded in the House version of these bills, and we're waiting to see the final action on those bills before they come together. Currently, we're in the bill for less money than we asked for, and our delegation is working to try to plus us up to the full amount by the, by the time it reconciles.
Okay, that was a number as, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
What I wanted to, I guess what I was trying to emphasize that we were successful and building on that, I think is very important for Woodinville. So thank you. Councilmember Best Campbell.
So after the delegation went to DC, I heard from some of my contacts in DC that our RACE grant could use a little help in the narrative department, making it a little bit more accessible, making the story a little bit more vibrant and a little bit more relatable. The feedback that I received, what it, was that it was a bit dry and boilerplate. So if we can add, I don't know how you make a grant application exciting, but if you can do that. That was the, the criticism that I had heard after my visit. But in terms of the number of delegates that we're sending to DC, I think it's weighing heavily in the form of staff and not elected officials. So I think it's important to have obviously enough staff to support, but also elected should be talking and advocating on behalf of their community as well. So I think if we want to expand the reach of the city, I think it's important to have as many elected officials as staff officials in those rooms. We are elected to advocate and that's no knock against staff. They do all of the work for us, but it's our responsibility to be these mouthpieces. So I would ask that we have, you know, find someone else who's going to go. I think the more that we have multiple city council members advocating, the better. Different voices, we all fill each other's voids in different ways. It could only help the city and not hurt them. So those are the, the suggestions that I have. Thank you.
Any discussion? Council, Councilmember Evans, do you have a comment, question?
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to revisit a comment that you made earlier in that going here with one voice, going here with one agenda, going here with one goal together is really important. And so as you're in these rooms, do you find that it's beneficial to have lots of different viewpoints? Or do you find that it's much more beneficial to have that agreed upon agenda and those talking points and to go in there to the, to the elected members of Congress and to their staffs and have that one sort of agenda item that we're driving?
Thank you, council member. And forgive me, council member Best Campbell, I didn't take your question to be like there was going to be a, a debate in the, in the Senate offices when, when council went back there. Rather, it's a, it's a set of voices advocating for the city's priorities. The council adopts the federal agendas, both at the, or the state and the federal agendas, and our job is to go execute frankly, on that, on that agenda. Honestly, it's, it's, it's up to the city in terms of what is the best way to do that. I have a number of municipal clients, they all do it a little bit differently, right? And it's kind of what works best for, for your council and your staff to do. Generally speaking, members of the delegation, respect elected officials. You both run for office, you both are accountable to voters, you have a shared constituency, and that carries a lot of cachet, should carry cachet in Olympia, at the county level, and certainly in DC as well. The, the fact of the matter is you both are doorbelling and talking to the same set of people, right? They respect that. Staff are, are often the, the technical experts. These are the ones that have the answers to the problems. These are the ones who put the packages together. These are the ones who understand the budgets and the financing and how the project will get built. But the, the role of elected officials and the most valuable role is to say why it's a community priority, why this is important for the city of Woodinville, and how this project strategically fits into the future of what we're trying to achieve. And that bluntly voice does come better from elected officials than it does come from staff. And that's kind of the trade off. So it really is up to the city in terms of kind of what's the best team to put on the field, you know, to, to make that happen. But that tends to be kind of the, the assignment of roles, if you will.
All right, thank you.
Okay, seen, no other questions? Do I have a motion for AWC and DC?
Point of order, are we done talking about, are we just talking about DC or are we doing questions about both DC and AWC?
We can, we can still, Jared passed the AWC, but we can We can, we can still, Jared passed the AWC, but we can certainly go back and ask Councilmember Best Campbell.
So AWC Action Days, I have searched high and low on both that website and on the MRSC, which is where we have a lot of guidance in terms of how we proceed as council members and for Action Days. The only thing that I could find, and Mr. Ganson, maybe you have access to a different part of that website than I do, the only thing it ever says on there is who should attend? Well, all council members and city officials and, and, you know, everybody is welcome. I'm aware that all of the cities that we touch send a full delegation, and there are some very contentious councils that we touch, and they send all of their delegation. And tonight, we have heard lots of sideways comments about council members, and there's a bickering on this council, and sure, without friction, there is no pearl that is created. However, we all are on this dais because we love Woodinville. And historically, last year was the first year we ever limited the opportunity for any council member to advocate on their, on behalf of their community. Other years, we have had three because we have had council members unable to attend, but not prevented from attending. Now, we are creating a situation in which no other city has put themselves in this position, and I would like to know, can you show me either a court case or a ruling or something that would say, why Woodinville, amongst all of our neighbors, is the only one that decides to limit participation in AWC Action Days?
Oh, I heard my name, but I don't think I heard a legal question. The council rules provide that the council as a body will designate representatives and delegates. I don't have any particular insight into AWC situation. We talked about the OPMA a little bit earlier today. In my experience, and again, not specific to AWC, but specific to all sorts of, you know, subcommittee situations and representative opportunities similar to this one, you do have OPMA concerns. If a quorum of the council is in one place talking about city business and that place isn't a properly noticed public meeting, that's an OPMA violation. The OPMA does have a, not so much an exception, but an observation that if a quorum attends, you know, a social event or a conference and avoids discussion of city business while they're there, that's not a violate, that's not a meeting, that's not a violation of the OPMA. The key is avoidance of any action as broadly defined by the OPMA. And anytime you have a quorum of council members present where the entire proposition is to talk about the city's interests, I don't know how you avoid that violation.
So just to follow up, my specific question was, are you aware of any case law that has arisen from violations of a quorum of council members going to AWC just anywhere in the state?
Specific to AWC? No, of course not.
Just to reiterate, and we went through this all last year, OPMA, we keep having the same discussion, and it's really, I think it's, it's important just because there hasn't been somebody filing a lawsuit against OPMA violation, doesn't mean that it doesn't exist. We can't, we can't discuss city business as a quorum, and that goes back to the emails, it goes back to where the council, like we did last year, we adopted city priorities. We did that a couple of weeks ago of what the city priorities are to go to discuss down in Olympia. We've done that with DC. We, I don't think it's wise to violate OPMA rules, and this is a public meeting, and even discussing that we're considering violating OPMA rules is, is not a good practice. So I advocate that council selects three people, which is not a quorum, to go to AWC and makes a considered, has a, a considered discussion on how to approach the DC visit when you take into constraints of one message, also cost of sending council back too. So, but that's, that's a discussion for city council, but I strongly recommend that we, we do not have a quorum down in Olympia discussing city business because that's clearly an OPMA violation, it's not a public meeting. With all that said, let's, we start with AWC. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I've moved to nominate tonight's recently affected representation for this body. Mayor Millman and myself, along with Sarah Arnt, to go to City Action Days 2024.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. As the maker of the motion, discussion, Deputy Mayor Randolph.
I feel like we did a good job last year. We went in, we did offer different perspectives and were able to voice, provide a voice for Woodinville that people listened to. There were things that actually changed within legislation from the action that we brought forward. And if, we could discuss those things at length, but I think we did a good job in what we did when we went down and achieved our goals as we went down for, so that's all.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
Between the last discussion item and this one, it feels like this meeting has been about limiting speech and not expanding it. We're doing everything we can to shoehorn in, Rachel, don't go to Olympia, you're an embarrassment. You know what? You're right, I am an embarrassment to myself, to you. Sure, hang it on me. I am here to advocate on behalf of the citizens of Woodinville. I'm happy I went to DC, I'm happy we got rail banked, and frankly, I'm not desiring to go down to Olympia because I've seen what this delegation does down there, and I think that I can do a better job representing the people here. But I really think we need to consider, not hiding behind OPMA to limit speech, but we need to expand it and maybe expand our horizons and understand that you may not like the person, but sometimes they have ideas that are right.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
I would challenge any member of this body who has a specific issue, view, or perspective that they would like represented when we go down to AWC Day, to please let us know what that is. I specifically want to be able to represent that view. So if you feel like something's missing from what we're saying, I'm more than open to, to hearing that out, and you have my email, you can speak to me in person. As a matter of fact, sending to my email sends to several other people. So please, we're, we're trying to actually be an open body, and I would implore you to, to utilize that to your best abilities.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Best Campbell?
Nope.
Mayor Millman?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnt?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yes.
Motion carries five-two. Do I have a motion for DC?
I nominate to send Mayor Millman to represent the city in DC for the legislative visit.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Maker of the motion, Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Not too different from the previous motion. I think we achieved what we went there for last year. It just didn't quite get past the finish line because we weren't selected, and I think this will be an opportunity to say, remember that thing that you got really close to last year, let's select it this year. And I think it'll, it's definitely got the support that it needs to, to make it to the finish line this time around.
Councilmember Taylor.
I nominate Councilmember Rachel Best Campbell.
We, we're on one motion right now.
Well, I thought we were nominating.
Well, there's, there's a motion and a second on a nomination.
Point of order?
Point of order, the, we can only send one member at this point in time.
But similar to the previous vote, we can choose one over the other?
Certainly, I wouldn't be against that if we followed through that way.
Mr. Ganson, maybe you can clarify, but I believe we have a motion, a second on, on one member, so that would need to be an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. It's, once you have a, a motion, the maker of that motion, unless there are superseding motions, the maker of that motion has a right to have it voted on, assuming it's been seconded, which it was. You know, it, if council wants to, if, if there's a withdrawal of that motion or the, or the motion is amended to, to provide an alternative, those are, those are a couple of pathways. Withdrawal of the motion would, and consensus to approach it with a nominating sort of a process, similar to how you filled several other positions this evening, you could do that, but right now, there is a motion pending.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. I think as an elected official who was just resoundingly re-elected, and also as the person that we've elected as our mayor, that Mayor Millman is the right person to go and be our voice, I would also ask that any of us who want to review the Raise Grant or any of the other talking points, that we're able to do that and have plenty of time to give input and feedback. But I know last year, this delegation was very successful going to Washington DC, and so I look forward to building on that success this year. Thank you.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
Last year, I paid a hefty portion of the princely sum we were paid as council members to go and advocate on behalf of the city on my own time, which is my right as a council member, which is all of our rights as a council member. And advocating on behalf of the city, on behalf of our stated goals, let's say it again, what did I talk about rail banking? I do it again this year with the princely sum that I make, because what matters to me is not that the city pays for me to go to DC or that I have a lobbyist there, is that I get to go and speak to elected officials on behalf of my citizens, which is my right as an elected official, whether I was elected two years ago or two months ago. We all have a right. So I have no problem if we want to send someone else on the city's nickel, but you can always count on me to advocate on my own time for what I believe the citizens of Woodinville want. And if there's a censure that would like to come tonight in advance of that, so be it, but it's not going to stop me.
I'd just like to add that, you know, there, like anything else, this is our first, first time, and there was certainly a learning experience, and I learned a lot. It was a lot of work, and I, I think that building those relationships that I have been working on or working hard to build for the last two years, I think we're seeing, we're seeing that bear some fruit, and so I look forward to building on that. And I would caution all council members that we have selected our agenda, and if we do select a representative, that is the council's will. Now, if somebody wants to go on their own time, on their own dime, that's fine, but you cannot represent the city of Woodinville without council's permission.
Point of order, that's not accurate.
That's not a point of order, councilmember?
It is a point of order, you are stating something that is not a fact. All council members have a right to speak to elected officials. We don't have a right, according to our rules.
Councilmember, you're not making a point of order.
I am making a point of order.
You're making a speech. Make a point of order as you're breaking the rule.
Can you please stop talking so I may reference the point of order? Thank you. In our rules and procedures, it says, unless specified by council. If we have rules and procedures, we follow them. Council members are free to speak to any elected official so long as, not we ask permission of council, so long as we address the issue that council has voted on. So as long as any council member addresses what we have said is our agenda, then there is no problem.
That, that point of order is not well taken. In fact, it is, it is not proper for our rules to go and represent Woodinville without the council's permission or outside of. And last, last trip in DC represented Woodinville in a, in a complicated legal process, and that was inappropriate, and we need to avoid that. So, any other discussion? All right, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Best Campbell?
No.
Mayor Millman?
Yes.
Councilmember Arnt?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yet.
What?
I'm sorry.
What was?
No.
That was a no, I guess, in Russian.
And Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yes.
Thank you.
Point of order. Councilmembers are speaking without being acknowledged.
Thank you. Point of order, well taken. Not allowed to speak unless you've been recognized by the chair, thank you. Okay, second public comment, period? Do we have anybody signed up? We have one, one person signed up, Sharon Peterson. Please state your name, you have three minutes, and where they live in city limits.
You already said my name. My name is Sharon Peterson, and I live in the city limits. I believe your legal counsel indicated that you must avoid taking action, and that is the key word that I believe your legal counsel said in relation to OPMA. So I think that if that's true, and I would invite him to confirm if that's true, then as long as a gathering of humans and the city council does not take an action, then you may not need to fear OPMA. Point number two, when the delegation goes to the Association of Washington Cities and to Washington, well, the Association of Washington Cities specifically, I would like to ask you to pay very careful attention to anything that looks like number, Bill Number 1110, where we got by this, by the skin of our teeth last year only because of a last-minute change, but there are rumors that that's going to come back up on the agenda, and they're, they're going to tighten the screws again. So I would very much like to ask whoever is going there to be very, very aware of what's happening there. Item number three, you were talking about Zoom bombing. In case you don't know, Teams, which is made by Microsoft, has a number of security features in it. You can tightly control a meeting, you can put somebody on mute, you can kick them off the meeting. So there are a number of built-in features that Teams provides automatically, and Microsoft provides a plethora of training, or if you need a training, there's classes that are taught for free or very low cost by certified trainers around. So by using the built-in security features and technology of Teams, I think you can avoid the idea that somebody would come and lambast your meeting and that you would have no control over it, because with the click of a button, you can kick them out. So those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you. Reports of city manager.
Nothing this evening, other than, of course, and some of you mentioned already, we are fortunate to start 2024 with three meetings in January, so we'll have a meeting again in next week, same time, same place, and then again the following week. So we're going to get started, really diving into it. And next week, promises to be very exciting, all about comp plan and affordable housing issues.
Okay, thank you. Reports of council members. Councilmember Evans?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, I just want to take time to thank staff for taking all the time for my detailed orientation process. We had a few days of that, so I appreciate all the time you all spent getting me up to speed here, and I'm looking forward to collaborating with staff and the rest of our council here to serve the city of Woodinville. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Nothing this evening, thanks.
Councilmember Best Campbell?
I'm sure we've all noticed that around Hagan, TRF is replacing all of their sidewalks, which has the effect of showing that the city of Woodinville is not replacing our sidewalks at the rate that I think the public wants. So I'd like to know where we're at in terms of the ADA transition. We're being shown up pretty hard by TRF. I don't want to say it's a competition, but they're taking the time and expense to improve that sidewalk, to make it walkable, which is our language, so it's sort of like they're showing us up. Do we have plans? And I know we have budget discussions coming up, so what could be more exciting than talking about that during budget? But I'd like to just put that out there. Other groups are doing it, so I think that it's, it's something that we're hearing about as well, not that Mrs. Susa does not have enough on her plate right now, just add a little bit more to that Thanksgiving plate. Thank you.
Councilmember. Councilmember Arnt?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Taylor?
Nothing tonight.
And I don't have anything either. We are gonna have an executive session. I need to read the appropriate verbiage. Counsel will adjourn to a closed session for approximately 45 minutes to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions, or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party. When public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency, reference RCW 42, .30, .110, no formal action is expected to be taken and will adjourn after we come out of, likely adjourn right after we come out of executive session, just to give the audience that warning. Okay. So we will be back 10:15, you think it's gonna take?
I hope not, but I'll say 10:15, and if I might suggest five minutes before we start the executive session.
Okay. Good idea. We'll, we'll meet in conference at 9:35.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
You gotta do the verbiage, no? No action, executive session, no action taken. Motion to adjourn. Seconded.